Okay, good evening, everyone. It is seven ten P M. October twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five. This is the Homer Village Board Planning Board, Homer Village Planning Board meeting. Members present are me Chairman Donald Ferris, Mike Pollak, Ashley Nergeman, Paula Harrington, and Jessica Shipley. First item on the agenda is a minor subdivision for Third Covered Bridge LLC. Applicants Tom and Jean Quinn are present on Zoom. It's a subdivision of property at twenty-nine Cave Street. The only tax map number seventy-six dot twenty-six dash zero one dash twenty-two dot zero zero zero. It's in our R two zone and we're looking at Article two, section one ninety-two. And this is to sell approximately sixty-four hundred square feet to a neighbor. And I'll open it up for the quins to make any information, present any information that they would like.
You should, yes, thank you for taking the time to hear this tonight. You should have the paperwork in front of you, the map drawings of the, of the piece of property that we want to sell. We, the piece of property is, in fact, separate from the operation of the floral shop as we operate it. And very close to Charlie Bernheim's property. And it's, what we want to do is we want to sell it to Charlie so he can increase his property and use a piece of land that we just don't utilize.
It's not used for parking, it's not used for, it's just, Charlie has actually used, used it for putting things, storing things on that property. And at the garage, we have used for some storage, but it's really not operational important to the shop.
He would get a lot more use out of it than we do. It seems like a natural fit.
Okay, I'm looking at the survey map and I see there's a dark border around what you are transferring to Char. I don't get it. Okay, to the south of that, were you retaining that portion? It's at the end of Hanam Avenue. Is that part of your parcel?
Yeah, the south of that.
So that, that's part of Kimberly.
It is not. Yeah.
It's not part of yours, okay. All right, just wanted to clarify.
Kimberly Johnson, yeah.
Okay. We have, anybody have any questions here?
Yeah, where's the shared driveway?
It's no longer there, that shed. That shed was taken, the small shed was taken down. It was falling.
Can somebody just describe to you where the shared driveway is and does that have any impact?
Oh, the shared driveway.
Shared driveway.
It's just whole.
It's right along.
Right here in between it.
Between a solid black line in the building.
You could go around and then go down Hanam Ave, the other way.
They can't, since they share it, anybody.
Yeah, and it's just like, it's like a whole shared driveway.
Everybody uses that alleyway
Yeah.
um, to cut through from Hanam Avenue to get to Kaiga. From buses to police cars to. Every, everybody uses that, that cross through. And so this, it would, it would just be along the gravel there to the lawn is what the property would be.
There's been a shared driveway there between us and the Bernhams for quite a while anyway. This is just going to make that a little bit longer.
But basically, it's the lawn, the lawn is the edge of where that is, so.
No, he has to maintain it, that lawn.
Yeah.
You might as well, he's got a lot of his stuff on it as it is.
Yeah.
Those two buildings are still on that site?
So the garage is still there, but the, there's a small, there was a small dilapidated shed that was.
Removed about three years ago.
Yeah, it was unsafe for anybody to even look at.
It was a real hazard.
It had a lot of artifacts in it.
Okay. Any other questions for anybody?
No.
Okay, we have a, the county has reviewed this. And they have no comments other than it's technically adequate, no state or county wide impact. And haven't determined what type of action this is, whether it's a one or two, or one or, one or unlisted. No, some brand available.
I would imagine they gave you a short form C curve. Um, I think in the list, I don't know what Kevin did. The ninth, all you're looking at ours.
Yeah, he was a short form, but.
Kevin gave him the short form, huh?
Short form, part one, project information.
Yeah, and they filled that out. Did they give you the other parts of the seeker problem or not?
Nope.
Um, I think, what did you, that subdivision? Or just, well, the subdivision is, just.
They're a part two or three in front of you.
They're just taking, transferring this.
Yeah, where's the part two and three?
Right there in front of them.
Right there in front of them.
I got blank part two and three, yeah.
Cause you have to fill it out after you.
Do the part, do the blank parts two and three. You got it?
I got it.
It's not right. Okay, next time I'll talk with Kevin, gotta give, gotta give you another thought. Yeah, you should do a seeker for that. It's, it's, it's an unlisted action, it's not.
It's an unlisted. Okay. I said my whole project done, okay. So we'll do the, go through the part two environmental assessment form. Will a proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use or plan or zoning regulation?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will a proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that, that doesn't, doesn't apply, sorry? Uh, will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or exist, affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
No.
Will a proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? And number seven, will a proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?
No.
And will it impact public and private wastewater treatment?
No.
This did. Eight, will a proposed action impair the characteristics or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources?
No.
And will a proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Will a proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? Will a proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
No.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for a negative declaration.
My, my motion.
Okay, all on.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion made and carried. On the right, maybe a motions to approve the site plan.
My motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Also have to give consideration that to.
Was there something I could tell?
I think there was a, that he has to consolidate it with his property.
No, definitely.
Because it's land law?
They didn't say anything, I didn't see anything in there.
It says, creation of new subdivided parcel to sell neighboring property with the condition that the neighbor at thirty-one Cave Street combines the parcel with their home parcel such that there is no, will be no land law parcel created from subdivision.
Okay, so if you want, if you make the condition, change that motion with the condition that it will not be combined with the deed, the buyer's deed. Is that okay?
Yes.
Second, yes. Hmm, yes. So we're on. Look, I thought of that, you can ask her about it.
Sometimes I pay attention.
Right, oh, that, that's just part of, with Kevin compared.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, Kevin, Tony, Tony didn't even touch it.
I don't have the county's recommendation.
Well, I have it right here.
I only have.
Right here.
Oh, it ran in the front, yeah, it kind of didn't say anything, that's why I didn't say it.
Okay. So. Good catch. Thank you very much. Jessica, it is approved, okay.
This is something I kept.
There's.
Kevin, Kevin put it in there.
Yeah, that's something, how does it, who, who lets Charlie know that he has to do that? What, so this, we just put in the condition that Kevin commented on, that the properties have to be consolidated.
So.
I'll, I'll tell Kevin.
Charlie has to do that.
I'll tell Kevin that the Z B A approved of the subdivision, that they want a consolidation. I'll let Kevin know.
I'll see him tomorrow.
Kevin, Kevin handed in his analysis.
I'll let Kevin know tomorrow. Monday. Yes, yes, you're right. You're, you're, you're correct. Monday. We'll see him on Monday.
Okay. Very good. Next item on the agenda is site plan review.
Thank you all so much. Have a good evening.
There's a site plan review for Sherman House of D N three Courtman LLC. Sherman Household Hotel and Spa Restaurant Site, Site Plan Review. And at nine eleven North Main Street, tax map number sixty-six point seventy-five dash zero one dash twenty-eight point zero zero zero. Sixty-six point seventy-five dash zero one dash two ninety-eight point zero zero zero. And sixty-six point seventy-five dash zero one dash thirty-three point zero zero zero. It's in the central business district, business district, say that fast. To build a new three, thirty-eight room, three-story hotel addition to eleven North Main Street. And we have a resolution number twenty-five dash forty-six from County Planning Board, which will become a part of this record. And we'll turn it over to the representative for D N three.
Now, let me just tell you this, obviously, when I came over to represent the village, they knew, the village board knew that I had a conflict with Mr. McNeil's project. And they agreed for me to be able to continue to be the village attorney as long as we had a conflict attorney to assist the village boards with any questions on Mr. McNeil's projects, and this is one of them. Gentleman here is Bob McCurdick, who has been retained by the village of Homer. He is a municipal attorney with an environmental background down in Binghamton. So if any legal questions regarding this should be directed to Mr. McCurdick. Gentleman to my right here is Alton Ainsley. He is Dan's lead architect. And he can make any presentations that he wants. And I think Mr. McCurdick will guide the board as to where we are going to go from there.
Thank you. So Fran said Bob McCurdick, I'm here to represent you, so I can help work with you through this process. And the always awkward question, where do you want me to sit? Do you typically have the attorney sit up at the board or in the audience?
Fran usually sits someplace where he can run away. But you're welcome.
Bob, I walk in and out, so.
Yeah, that's, that's. I let the awkwardness look down, no, I'm sitting here.
We won't, don't let Fran get used to seeing you there, because.
He'll kick me out, I'm sure.
It's feelings like.
So I, I did, I don't want to take over here, but I did prepare a resolution for tonight to get us kicked off with the environmental review process under C curve. So whenever you want, I can explain that, whatever, in there.
Okay, I don't know, we don't, you, we don't usually get into that until we're ready to, we've heard the presentation, but. That's all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Again, my name is Alton Ainsley. I'm an architect from Pizzica and working, I've been working with the McNeil family for thirty years now. There has been a, a few changes in the overall site plan since we were here a couple of months ago. Right through here is the line for the floodway. So we have opted to just not touch anything in that floodway. We can't have any construction there, we can't have anything that might raise the grade to inhibit the flow of water in the event of a flood. The one-hundred gear floodplain is right here. It just clips the edge of the building and, and with a little bit of grading and the elevation of the floor is three feet above grade here. So the building itself will be out of the floodplain. And the five-hundred gear does come through here. But that is of no impact to the building again, because the finished floor will be three feet above the grade. Sherman House is right here. Nine Main is right here. The Sherman House will become a little conference center, some small conference rooms. Nine Main will become spa. And that will have both a front entrance, the existing building, and it will have a handicap entrance with an elevator located back between the new hotel, the addition, and the building itself. The main entrance to the hotel, that would be this area here, is basically where the side porch is at the Sherman House now. We've kind of replicated that in a sense. We've got a port of cachet for traffic to come in and stop and come in and register and then park. Overall, the entire site has a hundred and three parking spaces. That's including existing parking for the commercial buildings, parking for the exchange restaurant, and there's parking back in here for the residential area. And this gray area constitutes fifty-two parking spaces that will be basically dedicated to the hotel. We've improved on the design of a new courtyard between the Sherman House and Nine Main. Uh, there will be a veranda coming off the hotel, similar to what's there now at the Sherman House. And then that will expand out into an elevated deck with trellis work over the top of that. This deck here will have some open trellis work as well. And then there will be a ramp that's one to twenty, so it's not officially a ramp, it's just a sloping walk that comes down and there'll be a water feature alongside that, a fire pit out here. And then that will, that walk will wrap all the way around to the walk in front of the main entrance. Uh, we've shown a lot of planting here. And anyway, this will be a space for both the hotel and for events, that weddings, parties, whatever, that might be associated with hotel. Any questions so far?
Wait, the space, the space, it's hard, the driveway, you have to go through the entrance, is that two-way or one-way?
This is one-way.
Keep going, and keep going as, right there, that way, is that?
This would be one-way.
One-way, so it's the exit.
Exit would be here, Water Street.
Wall Street.
Wall Street, yes, Water Street's up here.
Is that by the, by like that, that, yes, by the corner, so it's like right at that light, James Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, in order to the James Street line.
Yeah.
This isn't necessarily dedicated as a specific one-way, it's twenty feet wide. And anyone here, if there's no one approaching, they could come out into this lot. Wouldn't be policed as a one-way street. And it'd be wide enough for a fire truck to go through there.
Should be no signage saying that it's one-way or like that enter-exit type, type thing there?
Uh, there might be some signage, we haven't gone through the signage.
Signage for specifically for that space, the driveway space. Not just say it's one-way or something like that. Non-signed, so that people can drive both ways, you think?
Yeah, I would think. We'd probably indicate that it is supposed to be one-way, but if someone were to choose to drive through there, they certainly, it's private property, they wouldn't be getting a ticket for going wrongly on one-way street. And it's very short in duration. There's hard surface close to the hotel here, and that would have a rolled curb so that it'd be room for a larger vehicle to get through there. And due to the comments that we received a couple of months ago about concern about the height of this building, we've decided that, yes, three stories would be much more valid in the community. And we have some renderings, and I think, yeah, the color renderings there of the courtyard. Uh, that's from the sidewalk view and you can see in the background, there is the building and it it does project up above, but it is again in the background.
Is there, is there something going on on the roof out there?
There will be some mechanical units up there, but when standing, we've run the angles, mechanical units are basically in the middle of the building. And from the sidewalk, the angle of view from, with a six-foot person, uh, you don't see the, yeah, what he does.
I've kind of hold the next seven.
It could be, yeah, there's access to the roof, but
you want to be the only, take, take in there.
Yeah, I would love to be the only favor.
I wouldn't want to come down the service ladder after I've had a few turnovers. And we've got those civil engineering drawings in there. There is, this dotted line here is an existing sewer that's down, oh, twelve to fifteen feet, depending on where you are. And that, we can't have that sewer underneath the building. So the civil engineering drawings show a new manhole here with new sewer line here and another manhole. Then that sewer line comes down to manhole here and then connects back to the existing sewer here. And the sewer calculations have been presented to the village.
The county brings up the concern that there's inadequate water. Yes, the applicant obtained engineer approval to ensure the pump station can manage the additional needs from the hotel.
We have submitted the sewer load and it's like three gallons a minute at the, at the maximum a hundred percent occupancy. And that is like, I think the engineer said it's like between two and five percent of the capacity of the pump station. So we have not heard any adverse comments coming back from each weight or, you know, anyone from the building compared to the sewers. The building will be fully sprinkled. And we have been told that at the fire, or the fire hydrant out in Main Street, there's sixty-five pounds of pressure. And we will be, once you lose the pressure going up to the third floor and through backflow preventer, um, we will still be above the required twenty pounds per square inch for the sprinkler lines in the third floor.
Has the fire department seen this as, I mean, this is within their reach now, right?
We have not submitted to them and I have not met with them, but we both do that.
This is, are the buildings that have tallness right now in downtown or?
Uh about the same height as the hotel.
Actually, they went to the four stories, I guess it could have become a concern that they need new equipment to get up there.
Well, the exchange building is just about the same height as this, as the peak that was earlier.
Mike, if I may, uh.
Yeah, sure.
Keith Riley has taken a look at this. Uh he looked at the older version, not the three-story one, he looked at the four-story one. And he did not express any concerns to me, given our current, we've tower uh engine. Plus the two tower engines of Cortland, the city of Cortland and the mutual aid. So the height is uh not an issue for the fire department.
And with the building being fully sprinkled. Shouldn't be any reason to have fire trucks there.
Has the sewer department also weighed in on whether they can handle the load?
Keith White is our uh water and sewer superintendent and he has looked at this, uh he has not expressed. Uh any significant concerns to me at this time.
And just so you know, Bob and the board were to meet the. What the uh recommendations of county planning, we're gonna have to get something in writing. So we know that Keith has sort of verbally said things look okay, but the satisfied accounting conditions, we're gonna have to do something that like, let me know that.
I'm sure concerned about the traffic off of Wall Street, so if everyone's coming off of there and going onto Wall Street. I mean, I know I work at Bevinkle and there's been times when I'm leaving there at ten after five and it can take me fifteen, I mean, I'm just one truck, one person. You know, leaving Bevinkle, so we've got a bunch of people that are leaving, leaving appointments, leaving, you know. It just seems like that's a lot to uh, you can't see when you're trying to come off that street because cars are parked and I'm kind of just kind of concerned about. How that like, how that plays out of getting up with Wall Street onto Main.
I'm not sure just what the frequency of traffic coming out of the hotel would be, but. Certainly fifty-two people aren't gonna be leaving at the same time. Two or three cars every few minutes, perhaps.
If there was an event like a wedding. At the end of time, weddings usually people just sit out slowly, but if it was a, then other kind of convention, it could be all. Come trying to get out of this.
Two people are leaving Bevinkle and it can take twenty minutes to get out into Main Street, so that's just two of us. So you have people that are leaving appointments, I mean, it seems like there's gonna be. You know, people staying there, people going to just a spa appointment and I'm, I'm just kind of concerned about. I think this is amazing, I can't wait to go there myself, I'm just saying that I can't imagine um what that, what that looks like on that corner. So I don't know if anybody. Chief Pittman or anybody has any ideas on how we can, cause you cannot see, you've got to.
You can walk the other way, right?
What's, what's this area between those two buildings that are in the colored rendering? The ones that are right in front and back of each other, right there, yeah.
This is a commercial building.
Uh-huh, what's the area between those, so this is.
That's.
So there's a little driveway like between the two.
A little bit, it doesn't go very far, it just goes through and stops.
No, if you could.
But if you.
Go out that way, but it looks like there's something there too.
You could go behind the bakery and come out to Water Street.
You can come out here to Water.
It, it's a nice problem to have, quite frankly.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I mean, this will be sarcastic and we could hear about who the hell would let this happen. Coming out of Wall Street, I'm not that familiar with it, but I can see it as a real problem. It should be looked at, what, what through.
I don't, I don't think you can get a light that close to the one on James Street, I don't think. Yeah, it's hard to get DOT to approve anything, they might put a roundabout in, they'd love.
So help, help me visualize it, I mean, I've been, I've been down Wall Street many times, is that the one that the bridge is closed right now?
So there's.
Yes.
Yeah, the bridge is.
The Beving Company, that's a parking lot behind the building.
Yeah, so Bevinkle's behind there and then you come out and then.
You come out, you.
Yeah, and then there's the other building and that's got Gail's Antiques and. Yeah, so you're coming out and you're just at the stoplight and people are coming in both directions and people are parked, so you can't see, so you have to keep itching up and inching up.
So you're reviewing, pulling out onto Main Street. I was actually thinking about coming out from that driveway facing the uh, that's parking lot.
So, so maybe this is a village issue and we may get a. Where you can only turn right off from.
Yes, my thoughts.
Because. Right turn only.
So you gotta go north, if you wanna go south, you gotta make a right turn, go a block or two and. Go back.
It's just something that should be, you know, should definitely be.
I, I brought it up last time, that I thought that that was a bad idea to have people coming off that street. But it's just, it's just as bad pulling out of. Of Water Street or the parking lot there because of. What traffic this part there and, or you could make, you could remove um some of the parking spots. So people can't park right up next to that street, so you can see further out.
The thing about coming off of Wall Street is there's that light, there's that light in front of dashers. So people are coming and you could just be sitting there waiting for that light to turn green so that you can go. So maybe you can only take a right, I don't know, I'm not, I don't work for, I'm just, I can see it being an issue, that's all.
I've done that several times when I come to the site. I will park out here and then drive through here and come out. By Water Street, just as opposed to making a U-turn.
But that's, those are things that, that this board cannot really address, uh that's something the village is gonna have to take a look at. And decide whether it would be a right turn only, one-way street, whatever the resolution is.
Well, one thing we could do is we could ask the applicant to at least estimate about the amount of, of the volume of traffic that'll be coming out. On a regular basis and then um we could get an opinion from the police chief as to whether a right turn only there would be beneficial. Um and get a little more information for the next meeting.
So the village ever gets their money, we can have a nice new bridge on Water Turn Wall, you know, Wall Street. And they could go that way and come out on River.
Well, that's a, that's the uh town, that's the town bridge.
If you press town, they'll give you a new bridge.
Oh, absolutely.
But, but really, it, but. Again, I don't think we can be saying that order, we're not gonna approve this because. It was a possibility, it was a traffic issue. People not being able to turn left, they go south on nature.
As uh the attorney says, I think this is, we can get an estimate for traffic, we'll give it to the police chief. And we will have our police chief take a look with traffic and the safety and he's very knowledgeable on that. And he can give the, the planning board an assessment, does that sound good, Bob? That'd be great, yeah, truly evaluating how big of a problem this is and are there any ways to mitigate it? I don't think, I think that's really the question, it's not really a question of whether or not to approve the project, it's, is, are, is this an issue and can we mitigate it?
It sounds like for the most part it'll be a few cars, but if, if they do have a conference and, and schools getting out, that's the only issue, but.
Yeah.
I feel like. Like it's a good problem.
Yeah, it's a good problem.
It's a good, but yeah. I don't know about the right. But yeah.
You, you are a right.
I am, but my mom's not.
I don't know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Right-hand turn between the, I mean, like when, when you uh no turn on red.
Sure.
Between the hours of seven thirty and.
Sure.
And three thirty or whatever the school hours are.
She might wanna turn that just to get home because you could be sitting twenty, you know, forty minutes.
You're gonna walk.
Yeah, I can walk, I can walk.
Yeah, you can walk.
I ain't walking, I ain't walking.
Anything else?
It's great.
Uh I think, oh, you need anything, I go upon the presentation.
Yeah, unless there are additional questions.
I, I had one other question, which, so when you said that the, like all the units and stuff up on the roof, are they gonna be like, is there gonna be anything for, for noise? I mean, there's houses that are. They're there, is it, it's gonna be like a lot of noise with HVAC units and things like that, is it gonna be noisy and?
Are you familiar with the heat pump systems that we have? Uh in many new buildings now, it's, I have one in my house.
So.
And it sits, sits right outside our bedroom window. And I can't hear it when I'm outside, let alone in the house.
Okay, good.
So these heat pump systems, it's basically just a fan that circulates air. And there is a roof plan that will show you where those units are located on the roof.
Will that be similar to what's on the exchange building?
No, well, the exchange has a rooftop unit that's. Uh the heating and ventilating, uh gas-fired unit. Uh these will just be small. Uh heat pump systems, it's all electric, there's no gas-fired. Heating system in the building.
So it's like mini splits or?
Uh even more efficient for mini splits.
There um uh access to this flat roof here where the ball is.
Yes.
The people could gather their.
Yes.
Well, what's, is he access from the hall or? Hall on that floor versus.
Second floor plan.
The, the access is from that second floor?
Yes, this being the second floor, this is a lounge area and it can access out from there.
So you can have some rally party or show clear.
Hopefully not. Yes, this is the lounge, this is an open area that looks down onto the first floor. And the access.
Yeah, you're there.
No, that is, there will be mechanical units sitting on that.
So the access you showed me goes here, right?
To there, yes, and this would only be maintenance access.
This is actually over the entrance, where is that? Here's the entrance, no.
Yeah, the entrance comes in under.
Top of the entrance.
Yes, this is the port of cachet. I can show you the roof plan, show you where the mechanical units are. This is the roof plan, that would be sheet one oh one point four. This is a flat roof area in the middle and this is the pitch roof. And the mechanical units are sitting here and this is over the corridor, goes down to the middle of the building. So they're set back quite a ways. You know, thirty feet from.
Yeah.
Roof edge.
What's the roof material and color?
Haven't decided on colors yet, but it will be a asphalt shingle roof. And then the flat area in the middle would be a single ply membrane.
Knowing that you're sensitive to the historic nature of the site, you wouldn't be putting a red roof up there.
No, no. Corbin had a famous blue roof. I think we want to uh. If we can't match the same shingle as on the. Hello, Sherman House there, we'll come very close. And then there are several revisions with materials on the elevations. We have some where there's brick right below that flat roof area to kind of separate the two buildings. And then. Wood siding on the rest of it, so from the, from the east, this would look more like two buildings. With a brick building in between and then there would be brick along here, that's. The hope.
And there's vertical and horizontal siding?
One or the other. We haven't really decided on. The design yet, but and I'm leaning towards a darker gray for the siding and then. A darker red brick. We've developed a lot more information since a couple of months ago, we haven't made all the final decisions here.
What's your plan? Like this vertical siding, oh, I see here rendered as like a platform.
Yes.
And here, this is a illustrative view here where on page A one oh two dot one. Where you see the two existing buildings and then you see this project being between them. And here you've got the, using, you know, some, I don't know what the side would be.
That would be a board and batten type siding.
Yeah.
Probably be a wood or metal.
Then the other one, who you have is.
And again, we haven't made a final decision as to which scheme to go with.
Right. Well, my, my, my concern would be that it is something that helps unite that front there. So that doesn't contrast with the.
And Nine Main is a horizontal wood siding. So that was the initial impression that we would do wood siding, the horizontal. And we could throw some brick in there, give it a little more richness.
Yeah.
And in the courtyard itself, there will be some seating walls that will be stone. And we would have a stone band for the foundation from the first floor windows down. So it ties it to the courtyard.
This is an interesting thing, we don't have a, in this town, any control of really. The aesthetics of the building. So this is only just a conversation.
Anything Dan's done though, he's been.
Uh it's been really nice. You know, so I'm not really worried, my two senses that this, this elevation does concern me. I can visualize that going down the street and seeing this board and batten, big facade in the back. Being very much in contrast to those two buildings and that I think that the platform, the one.
Yes, I.
Is better.
I tend to agree with you and the one that has the uh brick in the middle. So this is the vert- or the horizontal siding and then brick, so it makes this look more like two separate buildings.
And in that parking area back there, I'm just trying to see it, so there's gonna be lights and that they're gonna be.
Yes. Yes, we will have some perimeter parking lot lights, so. And those would be low cutoff lights, so they don't shine into.
Okay.
Neighboring property.
Will they be similar to what you have on behind the exchange now?
Yes, I'm starting to think what we do have back here.
But I've been through there and they, they're not, they're not objectionable, they like the parking lot well, it's. It doesn't, they don't shine on any of the walls.
Yeah, the industry has come a long way, but. Yeah, the industry has come a long way with preventing that lighter on.
I don't think timber face will destroy your building ones lights, but maybe about fifty feet of those light, it'll say any problems with this house. If you didn't have heard about it back. You describe what is the land use, which is zone AF with BF in that.
This.
In the chart.
That 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 came right off the survey, uh the survey is in Black Mountain. And actually, I don't know what that is.
There was underneath the whole, their chart there.
Oh, there's, I believe there's a house here and then there's a building here, the pump station is just about. Located here, it's a vault, it's in the ground.
There's a multi-unit property, there's a, there's a house, there's a multi-unit, like eight units. Oh, that's Wall Street, yes, that's a white one that's sitting back. Yeah, I think there's a house between this there and there's then.
And then there's a.
Well, what Dan had before he turned it down.
Right.
And there was a house.
Right.
Then there's a multi-unit, and then you hit the uh. There's another multi-unit with a small residential place right next to the pump station.
Got it.
Shouldn't have any impact on that. You know, the buffer there anyway.
Yeah, well, I mean.
Green, whole green space, then you've got the trees that you're indicating there between that and the property, that whole band, yeah.
Yeah.
And those trees will be on the other side between. Like the actual hotel and that house and.
The property line is here.
But on the other side, like between, it's actually her house. Those trees right there, like one and three, so um yeah, yeah, up there.
Right there.
So you've got a very nice thing.
Yeah.
Privacy situation.
Add that out. Put some trees in there.
And not to go back to the street, but the other thing that we need to understand too is there's a laundromat. Right there, which also has a a ton of traffic that's coming in and out of there, so in the back.
No, it's across Wall Street from your driveway.
From your driveway, it's right back, right, and there's a, and there's a laundromat right there. So they they see a lot of traffic too, so I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, I just know that there's a lot of things going on back there to.
So one, one thing is, yes, getting out on Wall Wall Street from all those locations. Those things are face facing each other, this driveway, right, there's an access to parking lot facing each other. So people have to watch that and then they come out to walk, you know, onto Main Street.
I mean, you can go, you can go the other way, but it doesn't necessarily, cause I think you can go the other way and end up around by keeping, right?
Yes, you can go that way and then you get out on Pine Street.
Yeah.
And you can go left or right onto Pine Street, either across the bridge or take the right back onto Main Street.
I mean, so there is ways if you know what, you know. Where you're going, but you don't, you know, so. Okay.
Thank you very much, thank you. Thank you. Also, you're there. You're a point where. This is a, see type one?
Yeah, there there's a couple of things, um given the significance of the project, the amount, the size of the project, it's high profile, there's. State involvement in this, um I thought it would be most prudent to designate this as a type one action, that'll give us the most thorough. Environmental review, um so the first step in doing that is to adopt a resolution declaring it was type one. Declaring the planning board as a lead agency, and we would then send a lead agency notice to all the other involved agencies. We have to give a thirty day period time for them to respond, and then after that, we can conduct this, any secret review. So it would be my recommendation that we do that for the environmental review. And in terms of the procedure for um the planning board review, I would recommend that we do a public hearing. And we put a notice out of a public hearing, um just to make sure we get any public in- input. On the project before you move forward with a uh with a decision. And all of that, I think will will provide the most thorough review and also to the extent that this is got state eyes on it and state funding. Um they're gonna expect that kind of public input as well.
Okay. Okay, everybody have this page? Resolution of initial secret classification intent to declare lead agency status?
Yes.
Well, I have to read all those. Then I would, I'll entertain a motion. To adopt this resolution. Declaring. Initial secret classification.
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
So, oh now it's. Then the next step I would recommend is that we um think about what's coming up next, right, we schedule the next meeting. Um and have a motion to schedule a public hearing at that meeting. Um in um in in terms of the timing, I don't wanna overstep my bounds here, but um. So, we have to send the notice of lead agency out, which we can get out, um should be early next week and provide a thirty day period. So I think we should be shooting for early December, maybe December first, which is a Monday. To have a public hearing, that gives us enough time to get the lead agency and get submissions back from the other involved agencies. And it also gives us enough time to have the public hearing early in December, so in case we need a subsequent meeting after that, we'll have time. Get that done um before the end of the year.
That's not a regular time for meeting the public. We need, we need public hearing, doesn't go into the regular board.
It it doesn't have to be, we we could schedule it for that December first date, if everyone is comfortable with that. And we would put a notice out and anyone who wants to come and voice their input, they can do that.
So we're we're there listening, I'm not ruling on anything.
Uh it it the the public hearing portion of it would be listening, but um after that, you know, we could convene a meeting and if you're. Prepared at that point to move forward with a decision and a secret review, we can do that. Uh if you feel like you need more time after that, we could schedule another meeting.
I think a lot of it's gonna be depend on what what comes out at the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, if there's, there's a lot of objection with the, we require a more review of. What we we're looking at. Maybe more requests for information from the.
Yep, right.
That, my crystal ball doesn't look that far ahead. But I can anticipate just from the questions we got here that their questions are gonna be asked, okay, so. Anybody have any, you have to suggest that we make for November or December one meeting, is that?
The day of the week is that?
My mom's about that.
It's a Monday. And then is the room gonna be available?
What I am thinking is we may need to go to the community building. Depend not knowing what the turnout will be, and I can also make sure we have uh. The police department, fire department. Uh there, if you have any questions of them or the public has any questions, bothers that within.
Yeah, absolutely, if if that's within the village limits, the yes, community building.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
It's right behind the station.
Okay, that'd be great.
Is it, will it be available?
I'll check. Just I'll I'll make sure before I do the public notice.
There's wifi?
Yeah, it's got wifi. Fire department, or we go to the second floor, we'll figure it out.
Yep. Also, the board needs to get two other meeting dates anyway, because Thursday, November, the Thursday, December are dates you cannot meet. So if you're gonna set tentative of December first, then I would also set uh a date for a meeting if need be in November. Uh um and also December, we'll take it the ZBA. Chose the November eleven twenty and December twelve eighteen. That is the Thursday before both holidays. Those dates. Okay with that, everybody?
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Or if you still did this, the meeting's ZBA at six, planning board at seven.
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 It's his eleven twenty and then twelve eighteen. It won't change it.
Well, uh this, will this project be the subject of those meetings?
Those are just irregular.
Okay.
Regular meetings that, if anything else comes out.
Okay.
We're just. So we're saying December the last.
Thursday ten twenty three at seven thirty PM. Thanks, Dan, Dan, Dan Egno.
That guy's an idiot.
He he had, he had another one.
Always right, Dan, this is the thing my husband knows, now.
What was that? I mean, I looked at it today and was saying, except the thing you guys say, yes, maybe you can come, that says seven o'clock.
That was.
It's okay, we're here.
I just tried to tell you.
I know, my my calendar told me seven o'clock. Yeah, no, I know, I believe you, I'm just telling.
It's the agenda that he's.
When I accepted the invitation, it it uh auto populated my calendar at seven o'clock, right?
So I'm looking at this one here today, seven PM to eight PM, village planning board.
Well, we're here, we're here.
We we all be at it, we all live close.
So when, so the next.
The next one's at seven, and then just remember seven, public hearing, you have. Quote eighteen and eleven, ten.
And what time?
The hearing on the first.
Seven.
December fifteenth. December first, seven o'clock, or do you wanna go earlier?
Meet earlier?
I.
When people are working, no, I'm kidding. Totally kidding.
I would say six thirty, is it six?
I'd say six o'clock.
Six, I say six.
Six o'clock for the public hearing.
Sounds good.
And we need that seven one. Uh entertain a motion for the next. Meetings, regular meetings of this board, November twenty at seven PM. And December eighteenth at seven PM.
I will make that motion.
You know, it's.
I will second for seven PM.
All in favor? And then December one, we're scheduling a public hearing, motion for the public hearing on this subject.
I'll motion.
All on an ad play, and all in favor? Fortunately, what else do I need to do with this? Minutes. Um, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh motion to. Two of the minutes of the meeting. August twenty seventh?
I saw one.
Second?
I'll second this.
All in favor?
Bye.
Anything else that we need to discuss? Yes, no? Remind your training classes, training, training, training.
What is it do by?
Well. I don't know if it. I've been getting stuff.
They're like saying.
You can go to the uh. New York Planning Federation, and if you want, you can, there's a link there that you can apply to. Apply for. Uh we're, I'm not sure how it's downloaded, the training, various training modules that they've got. You can sit and listen to them, you got a day, you wanna do anything, it's raining, it's cold, you don't wanna go out. You can sign up for and take all four required hours in one day.
I did, I did all of it, I don't know how long it is, does that, will I have to do it again?
Every year.
So I did that in like February, so I do this in February again or.
You can do it anytime next year, it's gotta be.
I just clicked it up to my Apple Play, I listened to it on the way to work, and on the way home, and on the way to work.
Paula, do you get a certificate or anything?
Um they sent it to Dan.
Directly?
Yeah, I believe so.
Think so, yeah.
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 Does, does it have, does. Who does human resources for the? Village?
Question.
Like who's like Dan, I know there's like.
You're working through that.
People have to take, so I don't know if the county, like where I work, they just see I work out, we have day force. And there's like a day force learning, so you can have a bunch of trainings on there and you can just. Go in with your ID and click on a training and watch it.
No, that is. We're too small for that right now, just the zones.
I didn't know if they count, if you could like. Combine them with the county or something.
I am looking into doing some shared training with the county, uh for Shemstead's agreed resource. However, we are trying to correct a whole lot of other things, and that is kind of lower. On getting to that point, so if anybody does any training, um get it to Dan, let Don know. Um but the big thing for us accountability is we need to have some sort of certificate or note or printout.
Yeah, each one give you some different bit, and then you can, and I just forwarded them to you in an email.
Got your gap there, Don, call order, it was a rattle over the troll. Adam must have left this for us.
He he used it.
He did?
He does.
Okay, put your knuckles on here, uh. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Love it.
Jessica, second? Paula, second?
Jessica, I didn't do it.
Oh, no, you didn't, I'll second it.
Jessica, you're so, he just, Jessica, Jessica.
All in favor?